Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the ordinary council meetings for Iseto City Council on the twenty seventh of March twenty twenty five. The time is three minutes past nine. Attendants, we have all councillors in attendance and good morning to you all. And I'll now move on to the acknowledgement of country. Iseto City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. I understand this morning we're very fortunate to have Adele Williams from the Ipswich Salvation Army here this morning, who is very kindly willing to do the opening prayer for us this morning. Adele, thank you. Morning Adele. Please feel free to introduce yourself and as well as you, you said Adele, and before you lead us into a prayer as well. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Captain Adele Williams from the Ipswich Salvation Army there just across from the courthouse. And we offer a range of services for all Ips people from Ipswich and provide a safe place for people there. Let's pray. Creator God, we come before you this morning to pray for your blessing on this council and upon our city of Ipswich. We thank you for this beautiful city in which we live and those who live within their boundaries. We celebrate with those who are thriving in our city, whose success is contributing to the wellbeing and excellence of our place of residence. But we also remember those struggling in these uncertain times, those who are in need of help physically, financially or otherwise, and yet still call Ipswich their home. We pray you will help them as they consider their decisions which affect all of them. And so at the beginning of this meeting, we come before you with grateful hearts for these people who have accepted the responsibility of speaking up for and making decisions on behalf of our community. As they gather for this meeting, we ask that you will give them your wisdom, your guidance and your strength. Help them to make decisions that reflect justice, compassion and the wellbeing of all those they serve. Grant them clarity in their discussions, unity in their goals and the courage to act with integrity. May your peace be upon them today, that they may be able to converse with respect, act with purpose, and that they may find the best outcomes which will benefit all of the community that we are called to serve. Guide them today as they work together for the common good with open minds and open hearts, always seeking the best for everyone, especially those in need. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Captain Adele. Appreciate that. We now move on to item four, which is apologies and leave of absence, and I have none, unless there's any here. Move on to condolences, and there are none. Item six is a tribute, and councillor Martin would like to provide a tribute this morning. I'll hand over to you councillor Martin.
I'd like to give a shout out this morning to Gao Gao, who is on his way to becoming the GOAT, GOAT, certainly in Australian athletics. So this young fellow had a special last weekend on Spotlight, and he is pretty well a household name, certainly the hottest prospect in athletics in our country. So last weekend, a homegrown champion clocked a time of twenty point oh five in the two hundred metres, which is the fastest time by any human on the planet this year. In fact, the time was so fast, if he ran that last year, councillor Madsen told me, he would have finished sixth at the Olympic Games. This is quite remarkable considering he's only seventeen. In the final of the two hundred metres at Cusack last weekend, he ran a time of nineteen point nine eight, which was wind assisted. However, that makes him the fastest Australian ever. Patrick Johnson is the only Australian athlete to run a sub ten second hundred. And as his coach, Di Shepherd said, and she said this on Sunday night, it's not a matter of if, but when he cracks the ten second barrier for the hundred metres and the two hundred metre twenty second barrier. Considering he only turned seventeen in December, this is an amazing achievement. And his feet, in fact, last year before he was seventeen, he was only sixteen, he ran a time of twenty point oh four, which broke the longest standing record in Australian history. For athletics, he broke the record of Peter Norman, who set a time of twenty point oh six in the nineteen sixty eight Olympics at Mexico City. So fifty six year record he broke, and he was sixteen years of age. So yeah, he is quite a freak. So Gao started his final year at Ipswich Grammar this year. He's been awarded the honour of being a prefect. And if you saw the interview on Sunday night, you'd see that he's really affable bloke, talks to people, takes time at athletics competitions to get photos with young people. And I know a number of people at Ippi Grammar that say what you see on TV is exactly what he is. He's just such an affable and humble human being. So I really want to give a shout out to the guy. And I would also like to see, I'd like to raise this serious concern, we've got a population here of over two hundred and sixty thousand, and Gao needs to travel to Brisbane to train on a tartan track. So certainly be proposing that happens. And people have said, oh, he's a one off, and he certainly is a one off by virtue of his achievements. However, last weekend at the state championships, we had other athletes, Ipswich athletes, Leah Lambrogan, she won the ninety metre and two hundred metre hurdle under sixteen. Mia Curtis won three gold medals. They will all be off at nationals, as did John Castiano, Dakota Stewart, Simeon Anstey. And there's a young fellow Jude Thomas, who won his third three thousand metre Australian national title at Sydney just two weekends ago. These athletes are all Australian athletes and come from Ipswich. Last year at the World Junior Games, Toby Stolberg competed in high jump, another Ipswich girl, and Charlize Goody. And Charlize has actually jagged herself a scholarship to go over to Texas University, and she competed and won the her first events at Shop Putt, no sorry, at Discus and Javelin. So I'd certainly be recommending that our council pursue looking at a tartan track. So finally, I'd like to say, well done, Gao Gao. We're so proud of you. And I believe we should be doing all we can to support the young fellow. This weekend, he's down competing at the Morris Plant titles, and I would not be surprised if he gives a ten second and twenty second real nudge. And then over Easter, he is also competing in the stall gift. So yeah, so shout out to Gao Gao. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Martin. Appreciate that. And there's research in it. Thank you. We now move on to seven presentations of petitions, and there are none. Eight presentations and deputations, and we have one from councillor Paul Augustine. So I'll hand over to you.
Oh, thank you, ma'am. I've just got a two, in fact, presentations to the CEO for two awards that will be one for the Ipswich Region Commerce of Chambers event that will be held later on this year. So one is just an acknowledgement for our sponsorship for the event, and also the other is the actual, one of the categories that we will sponsor as well. So we've got two of these from the chambers. And I say to the councillors, it's time to spruce up your Sunday bests and get on down to this very much a gala event of Ipswich, where it brings together our wonderful businesses of Ipswich. And these businesses really, when you go to the chambers, you actually see the the networking that happens between all the businesses. And and the night of nights really recognises these businesses that contribute to our thirteen billion dollar economic turnover. So I implore the councillors to get along and support our businesses as well when the gala event happens. So thank you, CEO, and I'll give these to you. Yeah, I'll bring them to you.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Move on to item nine, public participation, and there is none. Move on to item ten, matters of public interest. And I have a pub, a public matter of public interest on Ipswich's preparation, response and recovery to tropical cyclone, that I thought would be good for the record for our for our city. Our most recent weather event was very different for Ipswich. It arrived from the opposite direction of what we're used to, and it impacted us last, when we are typically the first to face flooding with such events in southeast Queensland. This was the first tropical cyclone to cross the southeast Queensland coast in over fifty years, leaving many of us uncertain about what to expect from such a rare recurrence. Ipswich braced as the tropical cyclone Alfred made its suspenseful approach down the coast for a week before a category two cyclone turned towards the coastline. I attended the Queensland Disaster Management Committee meetings from the Sunday, the second of March, when our first flood watch and prepare now was issued. In fact, it was actually my birthday. It's the first phone call I got up just before eight o'clock in the morning. It's my first phone call of the day, saying the from the premier's office, letting me know that the meeting would be on at midday. We stepped up our efforts to join with the state government and other agencies to get the message out to residents that they should prepare. Alfred's erratic movements pushed back the forecasted crossing each day, and we wait till another day with blue skies on Thursday, but did give us another day, a vital day to prepare. Council made sand and sandbags available from the depots at Raceview and Rosewood, and at a Red Bank Plains Recreation Reserve, Evan Marginson Park at Goodna, and Henry Lawson Bicentennial Park at Wolloon. Through these five sites, forty seven thousand four hundred sandbags were collected compared to the twenty eight thousand collected prior in the twenty twenty two flood. On Thursday alone, twenty one thousand sandbags were collected, which council extended due to the delay in the cyclone cyclone's arrival. There are also fifteen hundred vehicles that attended the self fill sites. And I want to thank each and every person who assisted in the backbreaking process of filling sandbags and helping each other out as a community. Both of Ipswich's Resource Recovery Centre started accepting green waste for free from Tuesday, the fourth of March, so residents could clear their gardens of garden waste in branches in preparation. The Department of Housing's Critical Response Team and our wonderful community service providers rammed up their visits to visit our rough sleepers and offered support and accommodation to lead up to the worst of this weather event. By Friday night, the outer reaches of the cyclone began to make itself felt, and police, state emergency service volunteers and real fire staff volunteers door knocked across Ipswich, providing last minute advice on preparations in areas identified as being at potentially high risk of flooding. At twelve AM on Saturday, the eighth of March, Alfred was downgraded to a category one system and hovered near the coastline before being downgraded again to a tropical low at six AM. The ex cyclone crossed Briar Bay Island at eight PM and on to the mainland at nine PM. Ipswich was impacted overnight with strong winds and heavy rain, which caused fallen trees, branches and fifteen hundred power outages. Although Alfred didn't inflict its damage on us like our coastal neighbours, we knew the biggest risk for Ipswich was still to come in the form of flooding from the significant amount of rain in our catchment area. As prepared to leave, warnings were issued for Bundanburgh and North Bevel. Council opened three places of refuge at the Ipswich Showgrounds, Shiloh Church in Goodna, and Rosewood State High School. Further warnings and alerts were issued for Moor's Pocket, One Mile, Lykheart, Ipswich, West Ipswich and Rosewood, with flash flooding expected. While residents near Western Creek and Grandchester, Calvert and Lanefield were also asked to prepare to move to higher ground. The Australian Defence Force members assisted with door knocking as major flooding occurred along the Brema River and Warral Creek. Ipswich Showground was upgraded from place of refuge to an evacuation centre on Monday. At mid afternoon, eighty seven roads were closed with water over the road and five hundred households were without power. Heavy rainfall resulted in flooding along our creeks and rivers, breaking their banks along the Brema River in Ipswich peaking at eleven point four seven metres, around midnight to just afterwards on Monday into Tuesday, the eleventh of March. This peak was below the March twenty seventeen flood level of twelve point three five metres, and we thankfully did not see as many homes and businesses impacted as potentially forecast. The total rainfall for the event was recorded amply as two hundred and thirty seven mils, with a hundred and sixty two mils falling in a twenty four hour period, causing flooding to some low lying areas and power outages affecting about thirty suburbs. Coordinated response from officers from council, police, fire rescue, SES, ADF and other emergency services and organisations was excellent. More than two hundred jobs were logged in relation to fallen trees from the seventy six kilometre hour winds that we experienced. Tuesday morning, our rivers were steadily steady and falling, and twenty four people had presented themselves at the evacuation centre overnight. The recovery phase began with the community cleaning up their homes and businesses, and our crews working hard to reopen bridges and roads as the water went down. Overall, we've had a report that there were thirty five properties impacted across Ipswich, which means they had water in their livable areas of their homes. By Wednesday, the majority of council services returned to normal operations as the recovery phase kicked up a notch. A week later, all bridges had been reopened, and only two gravel roads remained closed, and our roadworks team had filled in six hundred and eighty four potholes. More than one hundred council parks, estates and facilities were found to have had some level of infrastructure damage. Our Resource Recovery Centres received three hundred and fifty tonnes of green waste from two thousand three hundred and thirty seven customers. A community recovery hub was opened in the Nicholas Street precinct, and over a hundred and twenty people visited for assistance. Cyclone Alfred may have been rare this time, but as we know, our weather is becoming more extreme, and I'm sure we will not go another fifty years before we see this type of event again. While we dodged a bullet this time round, and our preparation time to be compared with twenty twenty two was better, as we put into practice the lessons learned in previous disasters. I would like to convey my deepest appreciation to everyone that was involved in preparing and responding to tropical cyclone Alfred. In particular, the Iseto City Council staff did an amazing job with crews out in the weather, keeping our community safe, blocking off roads, fixing potholes, filling sandbags, collecting bins, clearing roads from fallen limbs and hosing mud off our roads. Staff worked day and night to compile information to keep the community informed, updating our disaster dashboard, assisting in the community and collaborating with other levels of government and our key stakeholders. Our local SES is also to be congratulated on their efforts alongside the police and the Queensland Fire Department, as well as the many community organisations who assisted those in need. I say my final and most heartfelt thanks to the Iseto community. I want to thank everyone who helped in so many ways, both big and small. You did the right thing. You took heed of the warnings and prepared for the worst. You sheltered in place and you did not drive through floodwaters. You looked after one another and helped your neighbours. And once again, this cyclone has highlighted our resilience, our perseverance and the spirit of our community. Thank you. We now move on to item eleven, which are declarations of interest in matters on the agenda. And the first one, I think I have here is from the deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So which one? I've got three apologies. In accordance with section one fifty EM of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Nicole Johnick informed the meeting that I have a prescribed conflict of interest in item fifteen point three, sub item six, titled procurement contract five six oh one, garden organics material processing. The nature of my conflict is I have close family members employed by Ramondas Australia Proprietary Limited. So I will leave the meeting while that item is voted on and decided, discussed and decided, sorry. Then I have a prescribed conflict of interest in accordance with section one fifty EM of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, in item number fifteen point five, sub item two, event sponsorship, two thousand and twenty five Ipswich Cup. The nature of the prescribed conflict is I am the treasurer of the Ipswich Turf Club Incorporated. So again, we'll leave the meeting while the matter is discussed and voted on. And then, pardon me, in accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Nicole Johnick informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number fifteen point five, sub item three, two thousand and twenty five Gulf Western Oil International's event sponsorship. The nature of my conflict is that I'm a, my family hold a life pass to Willow Bank Raceway. We're not members of the exec executive. We don't receive any financial remuneration. We are just fans. So I ask to remain in the meeting while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Councillor John, thank you very much for those, the two prior declarations. Appreciate that. In the matter of, I guess, Raceway, just to reiterate, are you an office bearer or any of your family members an office bearer?
No.
No. Do you receive any personal benefits or financial benefits with this? Are there any other questions of the deputy mayor? In that case, I'd like to move that the deputy mayor, Nicole Johnick participates and votes on item, is it fifteen point five? Item three, or fifteen point five?
Yeah.
Fifteen point five, item three. Because there's no personal financial benefit to her, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous noting that councillor Johnick has not voted. Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest?
Thanks, mayor. In accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Manny Doyle informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item seven, titled procurement preferred supplier arrangement for the provision of electrical trade services. The nature of my interest is that I have a close association with a family member of one of the preferred suppliers. I discussed, obviously, with the commercial sensitivities around that particular item. I discussed in closed session the nature of the arrangement. I note it was decided by my fellow councillors that I participate in the meeting.
Thank you very much. Councillor, I do note that in this particular one, the the council has made confidential the list of panelled suppliers. So I understand that's the reason why you can't.
Yes, that's correct.
Because identify when it's been, when it's confidential.
Would be more than happy to speak publicly on the matter, but noting that, yes, those suppliers, and it's not just someone I'm declaring a conflict in relation to, the other names on that supplier list.
I do note, I'll just probably tap into councillor Tully, who was the chair of that meeting, how that, how we managed that conflict of interest last week.
Yeah, thank you, mayor.
Or that declarable conflict, sorry.
The to to ascertain the details being provided, because we were in open session when it was first raised, we went into a closed session. All councillors were advised in detail exactly what it was, and the view was that it was, these are not legal words, but at the lower end of the scale and more like a precautionary declaration. And we moved back into open session and made that decision accordingly, that you could stay, speak and vote if required.
Councillor, do you have any personal financial benefit to this potential council decision?
No. No.
I'll open it for other questions, councillors. No other queries? Uh, in that case, I'll move that councillor Marnie Doyle participates and votes on item, uh, was it fifteen point? Sorry. Is it fifteen point three? Yeah. Yes, fifteen point three, item seven. Um, in total procurement preferred supplier raises for provision of electrical trade services. Uh, because there is no, uh, personal financial benefit to her and therefore a reasonable person could trust that the final, final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that councillor Antonelli? Thank you. Um, any discussion? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room noting that councillor Doyle has not voted. Thank you. Are there any other conflicts of interest to declare?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, actually I'll defer to councillor Tully first.
Okay. Thank you councillor Tully.
Okay, thank you. This is a, uh, precautionary declaration, but it is a formal declaration that in accordance with section one fifty EF, the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Tully informed the meeting that I have a personal interest in item six, uh, item fifteen point three, um, item six. Uh, I think that's a correct description. Uh, procurement contract five six oh one, uh, garden organic material processing. The nature of the interest is that, um, um, two da- two, two or so days after the, um, committee meeting, I was, um, contacted, um, uh, by, uh, emailed by one of the tenderers, um, in relation to, um, uh, this matter going to council today. Um, I indicate that, and they provided a little bit of information wanting to meet with me. I contacted the appropriate officer in council. He, he was of the view, and I accept this view, uh, that given the circumstances, the time between the committee meeting and, uh, which was recommending a particular tenderer and, uh, today it would not be appropriate for me to meet. So, um, I, um, and I certainly haven't been influenced by, um, I'll make this sort of explanation for councils to consider, councillors to consider the matter. I haven't been, um, influencing in any way at all, but, um, I think just for the sake of, um, um, total openness in relation to this. I've never experienced this sort of situation before of being contacted by a tenderer between a committee meeting and a council meeting. So I'll make that declaration and leave it to the council to decide.
Thank you councillor. I just thought to know that councillor Tully also called me yesterday and let me know some of the, the details as well and, um, and, and the fact that he'd sought advice from council and has followed that advice. Um, does anyone have any questions of councillor Tully? Um, councillor, are there any personal financial benefits to the declarable conflict that we just that you've raised?
I'll answer that formally. No.
Yeah, thank you. If there's no other queries, I'll move that councillor Paul Tully participates and votes on item fifteen point three, item six, procurement contract five six zero one garden organics material processing, because there's no personal financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Um, any questions or a discussion? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Um, everyone's voted except for councillor Tully and councillor, and the deputy mayor noting that she has a, a, a conflict, conflict of interest for that particular matter.
I'm assuming I've got a conflict of interest now on my conflict of interest because councillor Tully's conflict of interest. So I will abstain or not vote.
You've already declared that you wouldn't vote on matters on this, on this matter. So just note that the deputy mayor and councillor Tully have, have didn't vote. Thank you. Councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, I have a similar declaration in, um, in accordance with, um, section one fifty EF, the Local Government Act two thousand and nine. Uh, I inform the meeting that I have a personal interest in the same item, which I believe is, um, item fifteen point three, item six contained within that report. Um, in that I too have received texts, um, from a, uh, one of the, uh, tenderers. And again, for openness and transparency, um, I, I give that, um, declaration here today. Um, I'm of the view that I can, um, I can participate, but, um, I'm more than happy to leave the meeting, depending on what the, um, view of the, the meeting is.
I guess, did you meet with them or was there text to and fro?
Oh, very, very short text to and fro, but certainly, um, it was a request to meeting, which I've declined.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of councillor Antonelli? No. Is there any financial or personal benefit for you?
No.
Um, this particular matter?
No.
That you've did raise? Thank you. In that case, I'll move that councillor Andrew Antonelli participates and votes in item fifteen point three, item six, uh, procurement contract five six oh one, garden organics material processing. Um, because there is no personal financial benefit to him and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. Um, so it's everyone in the room except for the deputy mayor and, and councillor Antonelli. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for being so proactive in those declarations. Are there any other declarations of interest?
Again, Mayor, um, uh, I believe it's a personal interest matter, but I'm happy to be informed otherwise by the CEO. Uh, that in accordance with section one fifty EF of the Local Government Act, I inform the meeting that I have a personal interest in item fourteen point one. Um, the nature of that personal interest is that I am the subject of the matter. And I, um, will elect to leave the meeting.
Thank you very much, councillor. Are there any other declarations of interest? No. Thank you. We now move on to item twelve, the confirmation of minutes. Um, any questions? I will move those, um, that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting on the twenty seventh of February twenty twenty five be confirmed. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Madden. Any omissions, amendments, errors? Anyone like to? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thirteen is merril minute and there's not a merril minute. So we now move on to item fourteen. Is the business outstanding? And move on to item fourteen point one. Um, and I believe, thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Madden, I know you emailed all the councils this morning. Is something you'd like to raise?
Yes, um, Mayor, um, I'm seeking that this matter be adjourned, um, until our April meeting. Now, I, I don't, I don't believe this matter needs to go into closed session with the words I'm going to say now.
Yeah, go for it.
And an adjournment isn't a matter that requires the matter to go into closed session. And I say these words with no reflection on council offices. Um, Mayor, over the last week, uh, councillors have received various documents in this regard. The most recent documents were delivered after our meeting yesterday. Councillor Martin and I had to attend a community meeting yesterday evening. This is an important matter and councillors should be allowed adequate time to consider not just the documents, but all matters. Um, and that is the reason why I'm seeking for the matter to be adjourned to the April meeting.
Um, thank you. Um. I, if I could, if I could speak to, I, I was the same. I was in Brisbane last night, so I had to come in before, very early this morning to read through. So, uh, I'm just very concerned about the impact on, on, I guess councillor Antonelli, because, you know, holding it off for another month. Is that something he wants or not? So I, if I could be given some latitude for some people, views from people. Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, the, um, this matter has, um, got a history going back, I think, to November and, um.
I think October, I think.
Uh, October, I'm sorry, yeah. And, uh, we've got a lot of papers. I think it's hundreds of pages, which, um, I only received, uh, yesterday.
Yeah.
Uh, when I was here. Um. Yes, you, you raise a, um, a fair point, but it's not the sort of, uh, matter that really can be discussed with the, uh, individual. Because, you know, we are prohibited from, um, doing that. I think we need to. Uh, and I find just, and I can only speak for myself, that, that I need more time to, um, there's, there's a, a substantial, um, uh, report by the investigator, which, um, I think I've read about the first three or four pages. That's all I had. So I, I think in the interest of natural justice, um, that it should be deferred until the next meeting. Might I say that we still don't have a motion, a formal motion, uh, before us?
Yes, I know. I must, just noting the sensitivities, I thought I'd be, if, if I could have some latitude from you all to, um, to discuss this, yeah. Councillor Madden?
I concur with councillor Madden. We, I didn't get home till nearly ten o'clock last night, so to pour over a hundred pages was, yeah. My brain wasn't potentially functioning as well as it should. Uh, could I potentially offer a solution that we meet, say adjourn and meet next week, just in a week's time? Have an extraordinary meeting? No? Oh, do understand that, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I guess when we'll get a formal motion, we'll take that into consideration. Deputy mayor?
Um, I guess just to put, bear some weight behind the, the natural justice, um, and time restraints under ten point one, two and three of our investigation policy. Um, there should be decisions without speculation. They should be on, there should be evidence base, et cetera. I don't feel I'm in a position with our, um, our briefing such as sessions, et cetera. And then obviously with the, the recent weather events and cancelling some different meetings that we can all discuss items on. I think that I could use more time to be more thorough with this item.
Yep. Councillor Doyle?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I don't disagree with, um, what's being discussed, but, um, I certainly, um, made myself, um, across this information despite spending, um, almost twenty four seven at the hospital for the last somewhat day. So, um, yeah, disappointing that, um, but, but I understand if, if others aren't up to speed, then, then we shouldn't be making it. But I also just want to note the record as well. It was a mention of, um, the councillor subject, um, of this and, and the, the stress on him. I just want to go on the record that.
Yeah.
Um, there's staff members involved as well and this, um, I can only imagine is very stressful for them, including a delay. So, um, yeah, it is what it is, I guess.
I just, the, the, um, items which I think were handed out like yesterday, I know I didn't get them until this morning, were, I think, items three point one, three point two, three point three, um, the, the basically the transcripts there from, I think, three, uh, up to three point seventeen, um, on our, um, attachments and confidential papers. Um, I prefer other discussion?
Sorry, and we, we haven't even got, um, a live motion, but, um.
I know.
Just double checking if we, if we do, um, um, put it to the April meeting, just confirming under the legislation and our obligations with the CEO that we can do that. There's no time constraints.
Um, I'll, I'll quickly check, but I don't believe so through the chair.
Thank you.
If I just, my understanding is that it's got to come, the, the initial report's got to be come to, to the first available meeting or in due course. But after that, it's within council's hands to, to defer it or adjourn it, yeah. I, I, I think we, we really need a motion before us because we're discussing around the issue. And I know about the latitude. I think we're at that point where we need, because I've heard two different suggestions about timing.
If I could have, I guess I've had others, so I'll let councillor Augustine, she's got her line on. And then I guess I'll ask councillor Madden to form a, a motion.
Yeah, no, I think I, um, I'm supporting councillor Madden. Um, yeah, this is a lot of information. Um, and I too had to go and watch my daughter play football last night, so that takes a good three hours out of the timing of, and I, I would like to give councillor Antonelli the full, um, you know, um, yeah, of, of being able to really digest everything to be able to understand the complexity of what we are, um, potentially going to vote on. And I think just having this within less than twenty four hours to be able to make a decision. I think I would, me personally, would like to have a little bit more time to digest the information, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, councillor Madden, do you wish to, um, form a motion for the, for the adjournment, I guess?
Yes, Mayor, I move, uh, that item fourteen point one on the agenda. Um, being suspected councillor conduct breach matter C backstroke twenty four backstroke double zero seven eight six. Um, be adjourned, Mayor? Is that the right word? Be referred.
Be referred to the April ordinary council?
Thanks. I appreciate that councillors. Uh, be referred to the, to the April, um, ordinary meeting.
I just make sure that's, councillor, are you happy with the motion as it's written up there?
Point one, I'm fine with that, Mayor. Oh, I'll wait for Vicky.
Rather than just referred, I think we might need another word in there, referred and considered at the April council ordinary meeting. What do you dealt with?
To the April twenty twenty five?
Included in the agenda of that meeting?
I think referred, uh.
Refered.
Are they all mean the same thing? It's coming to the April meeting?
We know what, what we mean.
Yep. Um, so that's the live motion before us. Do we have a second? Uh, councillor Martin has put his hand up. I'll open it for discussion.
I just think that's in the best interest of natural justice and I guess procedural fairness as well. When we're considering, you know, um, a, a serious item and, and to Pies words that, that requires our full scope.
From what I could see, I think because of the confidential nature, that the, the printing was done a bit differently. And from what I could gather, we only, there were five transcripts, uh, that we didn't receive until, uh, I think late yesterday. Um, so that's the live motion. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous in the room. Um, so that's, we'll see that next time if we could, Paul. Councillor Antonelli? Councillor Antonelli, may I ask, were you watching the screen out?
Yeah.
Okay, so please, I, I'm, I'm sorry that it's another month. Uh, and I think we acknowledge the fact that it's not ideal, but I think the, um, everyone wants to do it the right way, so, uh, thank you for your understanding.
You're welcome.
We now go on to item fifteen, which is the reception consideration of committee reports. And the first one is, uh, the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee. There, and the recommendation is that council adopt the recommendations of the Audit Risk Management Committee of the twelfth of February twenty twenty five. Um, just seeing if the deputy mayor or councillor Antonelli would like to move that as the members of that? Yes, as I, thank you. Deputy mayor, you'll move it. And councillor Antonelli, will you second that? Thank you. Any discussion?
I was an apology for that actual meeting there, so I'll hand over to councillor Antonelli.
Thank you.
Yeah, in light of that, I will move the mo- the said motion.
Oh, I've already got the move to second. Thank you. Um, any discussion? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point two, which is the report of the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee of the eighteenth of March. I'll hand over to the chair of that, uh, committee, councillor Antonelli. How would you like this report managed?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee number, uh, twenty twenty five zero two, the eighteenth of March, twenty twenty five for reception and adoption.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin. I'll open it up for dis- discussion from the mover.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, again. Um, I would like to, um, just briefly touch on, uh, a couple of items, but primarily, uh, I will leave item three, um, for my divisional counterpart, uh, so that, um, she can speak length, in length to those matters, but, uh, I will highlight the fact that, uh, there is provisional projects in division three that have been approved. Um, um, those being a pedestrian improvement to Burnett Street and Ferret Street. I know the gentleman there in Sadler's Crossing will be very happy that that has been, that will be undertaken. Uh, and of course, there's some dog bowls in some parks, as well as, um, a speed awareness sign along Collingwood Drive. Again, the, the residents there will be most appreciative. I'll leave most of that discussion to my division three counterpart. Um, and, uh, I'd just touch on very, very, um, briefly on item six. Just to highlight the fact that as a council, uh, we do have a very good reputation, uh, with respect to, uh, development and our decisions, but also with respect to the right decisions that we make. You'll see that, um, within the committee report, there was only two or three, uh, matters before the Planning and Environment Court at the moment. You'll see that, um, within the committee report, there was only two or three, uh, matters before the Planning and Environment Court at the moment, which is extremely low for a council of our size. I know of some other councils, I won't mention their names, are up in the dozens of, um, court matters. For us to only have three, um, shows that we, um, I believe that we do a good job. And that's a credit to our planning and development team. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Antonelli. Uh, councillor Martin, as a seconder, do you wish to speak to the report? I'll open up for the discussion.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as councillor Antonelli just pointed out, we, um, are giving the final tick here today for our provisional projects for this round. So, um, looking forward, um, to those dog, dog bowls going in, um, our, our parks. Um, as I mentioned during committee, uh, this is a regular request we get from, um, our residents, so. And as well as the safety improvements for Saddlers Crossing, um, and then the speed awareness sign along Collingwood Drive, which continues to be, um, a point of contention for our residents living down there in the eastern suburb. Speed, um, is often a big concern. So I'm hoping this gentle reminder, um, of the speed awareness sign might, um, aid a little bit around safety. So, and look forward, we've got a whole heap of other requests from residents. So, um, looking forward to, um, sharing those with you, Mayor, and any requests you might have for provisional projects going forward. We only wish the bucket of money was much, much bigger.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Oh, sorry, I should go to, sorry councillor Antonelli's the mover? Okay. Um, uh, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point three, the report of the Finance and Governance, uh, Committee of the eighteenth of March. Now, notice we have, I think, the conflicts in there as well, so how would you like this report managed, councillor Tully? And what about item four, sorry?
Oh, oh, and could I just indicate that, um, in the discussion, without moving it separately, there is a proposed amendment to item four, um, that, um, which I think has been circulated to councillors. And, and I, I won't actually move it at this stage because I have some questions about whether or not that is the, the right wording for, for the proposed amendment.
So, all items except for four and six?
No, and including four.
Okay.
Uh, because then we, in the course of the general discussion, we, we can, um, we, we can look at a proposed amendment.
Okay, so all six, thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Um, councillor Tully?
They're, they're more of a procedural nature, but they are important. Item two, the, of the officers' report, item, uh, three, item two is the Information and Communications, uh, Policy Update. Um, and the proposal is that the current, um, policy can be repealed repealed because it's operational in nature and we have governance provisions, as the officers have pointed out, uh, which completely cover, uh, the issue of the ICT services. The other is the Right to, um, Information Legislative Update. Um, there are amendments coming in, it's a state, state legislation, of course, on the first of July this year, uh, which will enhance the application process as, uh, provided for in the, um, heading to this particular recommendation. The advice we received that our, our policy duplicates or replicates in part, um, provisions, uh, in the Act and that the, the information that we provide, which is fairly detailed on, online, uh, will cover, um, the current and the future legislative amendments, so that anyone seeking to exercise their rights under the, uh, Right to Information, uh, Legislation, um, will be able to get all of the information they, they require. Um, hopefully there might even be a link to the, to the legislation as well, but it will, will all be in one place. And we don't, uh, formally need, um, a, um, a, a separate, uh, policy in relation to that. Item four, um, and at some stage in the meeting, there, there is a proposed amendment. I wonder if the committee clerk does, um, have that at the moment? This is in relation to, um, the area in Nicholas Street, um, and, um, yeah, just let me, um, you're near, you're near the corner there, yeah, yeah. Where, whether or not there should be some additional wording, which the mayor raised at the meeting, um, if I'm, uh, where, where it's proposed to establish a schedule of trust for road purposes. It is freehold land at the moment. Um, the recommendation is that the, uh, schedule of trust for road purposes be, um, uh, approved, um, which I'm supportive of. But the, the amendment, I do have some questions and I'd, I'd like to, um, um, uh, yeah, the relevant officer to, uh, come forward, please, to answer those of mine and any other councillor. Um, I can leave that there at the moment.
Uh, Mayor, through you as the Chair, we'd like, uh, Ms Nicola Harris, our senior solicitor in legal services, to come forward to answer any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you please state your name and your job title?
Nicola Harris, Senior Solicitor.
Thank you. Councillor Tully, you have some questions?
Yeah, they might, these might be a little bit over the place. So, so the proposal is to establish, um, this for this land, which is all underground land, is that, or below the road surface, I mean?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so none of it touches the surface of the, of the, that area.
That's correct.
Um, and it'd be a trust for road purposes. What I need to understand, I don't know if you've seen the wording of the, uh, proposed paragraph C.
I have seen the wording, yes.
Hasn't been, um, uh, moved yet. Um, undertake, uh, the same processes and procedures that apply to council when managing its freehold land. Um, the question I have, it's currently freehold land, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, I suppose two questions. Why can't remain in freehold land? What's the benefit of making it a trust for road purposes? And secondly, proposed paragraph C, um, that we're, we're, we're moving to deal with it, um, you know, in the processes, as if it was still freehold land rather than road reserve, which is the, the, uh, first part of the recommendation.
Certainly. With respect to your first question councillor Tully, the development approval that is in place for the reconfiguration of Nicholas Street has a condition which stipulates that this particular lot either be dedicated as road or placed into a schedule of trusts for road purpose. The decision of the, uh, relevant internal officers is for, and the recommendation that's being put forward to council is for the land to be held on a schedule of trust for road purpose due to the greater ability as a landowner that we have with regards to control over what, uh, services and things like that are placed within land compared to road. So the decision is being made on that basis for it to be, or the recommendation being put forward to council on the basis of it being a schedule of trust. And that is the reason it is not able to stay in freehold outright ownership as a result of that condition. With respect to the second question, uh, the schedule of trusts includes provisions relating to how the land is to be managed in accordance with the purpose, with the purpose being the placement of road infrastructure and the use of the area as a road. The, uh, qualification in that recommendation relates to indicating that the creation of the trust won't mean that the land is dealt with in a different manner to other land that is owned by council or managed by council. It's intending to confirm that the same processes and procedures that apply to other land that is owned and managed by council will be put in place for this land, subject to the qualification of the trust terms that require that the land be used in accordance with the trust purposes being used as a road and associated with a road.
Just in relation, suggesting that probably A and B are sufficient, but C makes it pretty clear.
That's correct. That's correct.
That, I understand that that was in the original planning approval, but, but just putting that to aside for the purposes of discussion and, and, um, uh, because councillors weren't involved in that decision. Um, why wouldn't, wouldn't it be better to be in freehold? Doesn't that give us absolute rights?
Uh, from a legal perspective, there certainly, it does mean that council would have greater discretion about the use of the land. I would need to defer to the decision makers being the planning team with regards to the rationale behind the decisions. But the terms of the trust would mean that council is still considered to be the owner of the land, just with the additional protection of the land being used for the purposes of road.
And this decision once made, i- if it goes, um, you know, into trust for road purposes, can we, uh, council in the future reverse that? Um, does it still remain freehold land?
So it's still a freehold land, it will still be within the Register of Titles with Titles Queensland. The trust terms indicate that if in a future stage, a decision would be made that would result in all or substantially all of the land being disposed of, or the purpose of the trust being unable to be fulfilled, it would require a decision of council, that's not a decision that could be made at an operational level.
All right, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms Harris? Right, thank you very much, thank you.
Yep.
My, I guess I had the query question when, when the email went out yesterday, uh, as you know councillor Tully, from the CEO who, who gave that, um, explanation about will this still have public scrutiny? And, and the CEO called me this morning, I don't know if you would like to, um, outline our discussion this morning. When, um, I was, my main concern was that, um, if there are changes, um, how do we make sure that it still has public scrutiny? So what, whatever decisions are going to be made under the trust, if it's within the trust?
Mayor, through you as Chair, I'd be happy to rest on what Ms Harris said. Um, I guess noting Ms Harris's, uh, advice to the council and yourself as Chair that, uh, provided that the officers under delegation stick to the terms of the schedule of, of the trust, um, and any council, uh, any, any decision to change, uh, those terms in a substantial way would come back before council for a decision. So I think, um, given it is a relatively small parcel of land underground, um, that hopefully that provides you sufficient satisfaction as to the transparency.
Thank you, CEO. Um, councillor, I guess for me, the, the pertinent part, I, I look at page thirty six of the committee papers from last week, and there's a couple of lines here. In order to satisfy the development approval condition, it is proposed to create, propose lot three as a freehold lot and establish a schedule of trust for road purpose for which the council will be the trustee. This will provide council the greater ability to refuse the installation of services through the lot by utility providers than if a lot were to be dedicated as a road reserve. And this remains important to this location owing to the non-standard pavement treatments and the high quality. Improvements in the location and council desire to retain a visual continuity throughout the precinct with as little disrepair as possible. So I guess it stops, it, it keeps the, the visual amenity, gives us more control over that, is how I interpret that.
Yes, Mayor, um, I, I'll just say in relation to that, my, my, I, I still have a view that probably it would have been better and stronger and the best legal position was, was that it, um, remained as freehold land, which in a way it does, but now we've got a trust superimposed over that. But it certainly gives us much more control than if it was just road reserve, you know, because there are rights of, um, you know, certain organisations to utilise that land, you know, without our, uh, say. So, look, I'm, I'm satisfied with that and, and I'll, um, move an amendment that paragraph C, to get to my original motion, that paragraph C be included, um, in the, uh, recommendation this year.
Thank you. I'll just check with the, uh, the seconder of this. Um, councillor Doyle, you okay with?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
Um, and concur with councillor Tully, but, um, my understanding is this was always to add an extra layer or level of protection for council, an extension of the freehold in, to apply some, you know, a constrained environment. And so it's not about councils, um, protecting councils, or it is, but, but it's in relation to third parties that may approach us, um, and try and exert a right.
Thank you. I'll open for other discussion?
Oh, that's been agreed to by, are we talking about the whole report now?
Oh, it's, it was your report, so how would you like to continue the discussion?
One more, good, that, that's been incorporated in the motion, thank you. Just one more item is item ten, uh, two thousand twenty five twenty six, uh, fees and charges. I'll be relatively brief with this because this is an early approval for animal management, health and regulatory services and some road regulation fees, um, so that, um, the council's in a position, for example, with the, um, renewal, uh, registration of, uh, dogs for twenty five twenty six, that that come, that can be in place at the start of the, uh, financial year. Um, at a future meeting, there'll be a whole range of other fees and charges which, um, would come into effect on the same day, but don't need to be, uh, you know, have a lot of operational matters associated with them. Can I say there was a substantial discussion, um, in the meeting about, um, probably putting, um, I'd say a freeze in a way, on the, um, current entire dog registration, um, which is a hundred and ninety three dollars. The recommendation was that that stay at a hundred and ninety three, um, dollars. And, uh, for pensioners, um, the, these are for entire dogs that remain at ninety two dollars and there'd be no increase. There were some other limited increases, the normal sorts of, um, increases, you know, in the three to four percent range, um, you know, in the, in the proposed schedule, but, um, I'm certainly supportive, um, in the current circumstances, um, if we can hold that figure. Um, cause, because and, and councillor Antonelli raised the issue with raising it, uh, too high, in, in a general sense, can, um, did, was it councillor Martin? Was it councillor Martin?
No.
No, it was you, okay, um, sorry, um, I just didn't want to get punched out at the, when we take a break. Uh, that is a joke. Um, the, uh, no, no, the point I, I was making, uh, you know, was in, in relation to the fees and if they are set at a, at a figure, it can reduce the, um, number of people who register them. And, you know, there's some estimates, a lot of people don't register, um, that they can, they have to pay for a de-sexing unless they buy a de-sexed dog. But it can be a discouragement because most councils in Queensland that register dogs, most of the big cities, have a fairly high, uh, figure for, um, uh, entire dogs rather than de-sexed dogs. So I'm certainly supportive of, uh, this recommendation, which would, um, come into effect on the first of July.
Thank you. Um, councillor Doyle, as the mover of this motion, do you wish to, um, speak to it?
Um, no.
Thank you. I'll put for other discussion councillor Tully.
Yeah, I'll just, um, uh, reiterate what councillor Tully said in relation to item ten. If people have in their possession the report, they will see that there was much discussion in relation to this. Um, as a council, we are one of the most affordable with respect to de-sexed dogs. And that was, um, that was reported some twelve months ago, or less than twelve months ago after the last budget. And, uh, however, we are an outlier with respect to our, um, entire dogs. So, um, this move is just to bring us back perhaps, uh, to be more comparable. As we do every year, we do look to ensure that we are comparable with other councils in South East Queensland. There is by way of legislation a need for us to have a much higher fee for entire dogs to encourage, um, de-sexing. One of the things we do here, um, in Ipswich that no other council do, and I, it was something I introduced, uh, many years ago, uh, which I believe, um, certainly assists in getting more dogs registered and more people, um, commencing that journey of responsible pet ownership, is the introductory dog registration, twenty dollars the first time you register your dog. Now, that gives you the opportunity over the next twelve months to then de-sex your dog, uh, and then pay the ongoing, um, de-sexed dog fee. Uh, again, that will remain, that, and that shall continue at twenty dollars. And I see that as, again, a great incentive for people to register the. Councillor Tully highlighted, um, there are some estimates around that we may have as many as ten thousand unregistered dogs in the city. And that is something that we, we do need to be more proactive about, ensuring that people do take up the responsibility of pet ownership. And part of that responsibility is the registration of their dog. Um, and, um, there were some other matters also that, uh, required minor amendments in that. Um, however, that is pretty much the crux of the, um, amendment that was made during the committee, and I commend the report to everyone.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councillor Tully is the mover, anything? Nope. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll call an adjournment, so we'll come back to fifteen point three six, uh, uh, after the, uh, the next, the adjournment. So it's, it's ten oh four, so let's come back at ten thirty. Uh, all those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, see you back here at ten thirty, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Council, now meeting for the 27th of March 2025. We've just come back from our adjournment and it's 10.30. When I was doing attendance, I'd also like to acknowledge that we have Kent Wayne in the Public Gallery, who's from the Department of Local Government. So thank you very much for joining us here today. My apologies for not acknowledging you earlier for the meeting. We were up to item fifteen, sorry, fifteen point three, the financing governance. Sorry, I'll say that again. Yes, fifteen point three, the financing governance report and item six. So I see that the deputy mayor is leaving due to her previously declared conflict of interest. Thank you. councillor Tully is the chair of that, of this committee. Would you like to, how would you like item six managed?
Thanks, ma'am. Given my declaration before and that I am permitted to stay here, I'll, I would suggest, just for complete transparency, that another councillor move that item.
Oh, okay. You were, it was decided that you didn't have a conflict of interest, but yes, I'm happy to move that. Do we have a seconder for that item six? This councillor Doyle? Thank you. I'm happy for you to speak to if you wish councillor Tully.
No, no, I'm right. I'll just see what the conversation is. I'm just, my declaration before was a legal declaration, but it was a precautionary one on a very low end of the scale, I would have thought. But, and even though I can't speak, I only do so if necessary.
In that case, as a mover, I'll speak that I think this contract is a step in the right direction, that we send our green waste to a company that's not at the centre of the odour issues that our city is experiencing. Garden organics are not as odorous as food and similar types of waste. And Reminders are offering a bespoke facility that will not only be accepting green waste from the city council, but also our neighbouring LGAs. And I think it's another example of municipal city council gripping up waste management and those odour issues are doing the very, the most that a council can do, noting that the environmental side and the odours are a state government responsibility. But the fact that we are very proactive in managing our waste and doing what we can. So this is, the contract is another example of us doing that. I'll open it for other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. So I'm just checking. Is everyone, okay. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. We now move on to item fifteen point four, which is the report of the Community and Sport Committee, meeting of the 18th of March 2025. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee, councillor Madsen. How would you like that report managed?
It's just like it moved as is, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Augustine. Do you wish to speak to the report councillor Madsen?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point five, which is the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee of the 18th of March 2025. Councillor Augustine as the chair of that committee, how would you like that report managed?
Oh, thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, I'd like to move the Economic and Cultural Development Committee a report. And its recommended, recommendations adopted, except for item two. So we'll pull item two out. The deputy mayor's got the conflict of interest.
Yes, thank you. Yep. So all eyes but two. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor has seconded that. So councillor Augustine, I'll hand over to you to speak to the report.
Oh, thanks, ma'am. Yes, I'd like to speak to the two items. Firstly, item three, the Gulf Western Oil Winter Nats sponsorship. Last year I went to this, ma'am, and I had a great time at the Winter Nats. And I really can appreciate the love of cars and automobiles of our Ipswich residents. And also far and wide, we had visitations of just over 16,000 visitors to the Winter Nats. So that contributed to $3 million towards our economy. So it is very important to our city. I must say that the, with my enthusiasm for the event, I am going to leave it to the deputy mayor to fly the flag for the nitros. I'm going to say a hard no on that. So you can go and represent because I didn't like it. I didn't like it. So, yeah, so I think this is a, it's a very good event. So the sponsorship for them is well worth the return for investment. So, and also item four, our Nicholas Street precinct, just the report for our, especially our Christmas numbers that came through the precinct. I was quite not blown away because I know what the precinct is. And I just must say the Saint Nicholas Street Christmas lights that we had was just absolutely sensational. I do 100%. I just cannot give my congratulations, my, just absolutely in awe of what we had in the city here too. Our council staff, our staff, our officers, our volunteers, everyone that was involved in our lights. I think it was sensational. I had friends and family come up and they were just absolutely blown away with what we had in our, in our precinct here. We had 175,000 visitors over that particular time. And then we had a couple of new offerings that opened up. One in particular, like I'd like to mention is kicking in. I have paid a visit to there on a number of occasions because I love seafood. So, so that was a quite a good little offering there. But we've had, just in comparison from January 2024 to January 2025, so just the month, there was an increase of 100,000 visitors within the precinct. So with the numbers, I think it's just proof in the pudding that we've got something tangible here that's actually a very good asset to our city. So I just commend everyone that had played a part in bringing this to life. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I think, I think you had your lot on first, deputy mayor.
Just in relation to councillor Augustine writing shotgun when I try and do 10 seconds in the X Y on the next test and tune at Willow Bank, are you in?
I'm in for that.
Okay, great.
Just, just not the top few words. Thank you. Councillor Doyle.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just would like to concur with the Chair's comments and wrap up. And thank you, and thank councillor Augustine for the hard work she's been putting into this portfolio as soon as she took it on. So I know the various departments within the organisation enjoy working closely with you, as I do. So, yeah, just want to mention venue. It's very, very exciting to start to see that come to life and take shape. Obviously, the Hoyt Cinema, the general public and now Mini Bounce being opened. It's everything that we could have hoped for, for that particular designated food and entertainment area. That venue was always planned to be. Also want to commend the Nicholas Street precinct team. The corner of Allenborough and Brisbane Street. So historically, that had that diagonal walk through from Allenborough and would come out within Nicholas Street in the old mall. There's certainly lots of discussion around closing off that corner. But what we have effectively done, and I'm glad to see again it come to life. The pedestrian traffic now flows between Allenborough and Nicholas Street along Brisbane Street, as it always was. My grandfather was one of those that, you know, would hang out on that corner, the old Commonwealth Bank. And those old gentlemen would come to town with their hats on every Saturday morning. And it was a real meeting place. And so it's great to see that pedestrian traffic moving through that area again. And so I want to commend the team. Anytime Fitness drove through last night and the fit out, the lights and the activation of the corner there. I am truly delighted and grateful, as I know top of town businesses will be, that we've finally turned the lights on and it's being activated. Regardless of whatever you think should have gone on that corner, the lights are on and it looks amazing. So, and certainly, you know, very safe now to walk between Allenborough and Nicholas Street along Brisbane Street there. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Doyle. I'd just like to put on also, also on item four, which is the Nicholas Street precinct, the project control group. I'd like to formally welcome Children's Therapy Services, the greenhouse therapies, to the Nicholas Street precinct, with their lease having now been executed. And yes, Anytime Fitness did open yesterday, or their first class is running today. So it's very exciting for our community. I'd like to mention our recent opening of Mini Bounce and the substantial local support that we've seen for this new business in the Nicholas Street precinct. And even on Sunday afternoon, I had a family event at General Public and of the 14 lanes, I think 12 were in use that Sunday afternoon. So, and you know, the dark, everything was very popular. So it's great to see all the people coming back. I've also seen people walking around with their bubble tea. So you can see that the bubble tea machine and tour walk is obviously pretty, very popular with bubble tea enthusiasts. I hope for any other discussion. Chair of that committee, would you like to make any other comments or go straight to the vote?
I just, I just would like to thank councillor Doyle for her lovely words. And I ditto the sentiments back to you. You've come with a wealth of knowledge and in this portfolio. So thank you very much for sharing that with me as well.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. So I think we're still on the report fifteen point five, but on item two. Councillor Augustine, so that's the $20,000 for the Ipswich Turf Club. As the chair of this committee, how would you like that part of the report managed?
Thanks, ma'am. Just move the, and with the recommendations as noted.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Doyle. I put up for discussion.
Thanks, ma'am. This is another sponsorship and this one's for the Ipswich Cup. Very proud to be able to have sponsorship go to this event. It's an event that's been going for 159 years. So that's quite, quite a long time. The, it's the highest attended event on the winter racing calendar. In 2023, there was just short of 14,000 visitors. So it's a well-loved, well-loved event. It's, it's, it's one of, I think, one of the councils, I can't remember which councillor, also noted in the meeting. um, also noted in the meeting that it's a, um, one of the only events that stops, um, all the other sports, um, on that weekend. So, um, even myself, running a football club, we'd make sure that our games weren't on at the same time as the Ipswich Cup. So it's very much a loved event through Ipswich. And, um, hopefully us councillors can go and support them as well on the day with your fascinators and your good Sunday best, and I'll see you there.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the turf sponsorship, Council Doyle?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I too just want to, um, highlight, um, very interested, um, and excited that, um, it is the, the Ipswich Cup. So Ipswich is the highest attended event on the Queensland Winter Racing Carnival, um, programme. Can you believe that? Um, that is just, um, really, really exciting. So, um, yeah, looking forward to getting my fascinator out. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't think Catson is going to wear his fascinator. Okay, uh, if, is it nothing else? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Well, happy you've got your fascinator ready too, Deputy Mayor. Before we leave this particular, uh, topic, I just thought I'd highlight, um, I think you have some news, Deputy Mayor, you're with regional developments. Do you mind letting people know if, if they're not following your socials?
I haven't actually posted anything on socials yet, Mayor, but, um, but it is, um, official. So I was, um, chosen by the, um, Minister Christie McBain for, um, the R D A Chair, the Regional Development Australia Ipswich West Morton Chair. Um, and I accepted the, the term, um, until twenty twenty-seven with an extension, if appropriate, till twenty-nine. So really, really, um, excited to sink my teeth into that, like, regional development role. So thank you for highlighting that, Mayor. I wasn't actually prepared with anything, but, um, it, there's no borders between Ipswich, Thinecrim, Somerset and Lockyer Valley when it comes to that role. And I think that makes, um, for great, um, partnerships and collaboration between our regions that have got a lot in common and, um, that have, like, different aspects. But, um, really looking forward to being there for Ipswich throughout, um, my term. So thank you.
Wonderful. No, thank you, congratulations. Well done. Thank you. We'll now move on to item fifteen point six, which is the Environment Sustainability Committee. Um, so for the sixteenth of March, I'll hand over to the Chair of that committee, Council Maden. How would you like this report managed?
Um, I intend to move that council adopt the recommendations of the Environment and Sustainability Committee, number two thousand and twenty-five O two of eighteen March twenty-five, Mayor.
Thank you. And do I have a seconda? Thank you, Council Antonelli. I'll hand over to you as the.
Happy to say a few words, Mayor. Um, this report primarily, uh, involves the acceptance of, uh, the, this committee report primarily involves the acceptance of two council reports, two important council reports. The first one is the City of Ipswich Urban Greening Plan, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and forty-two Progress Report. Mayor, urban greening is established as an important part of making a modern city resilient and livable. It has added benefit of protect, it has the added benefit of protecting vegetation and wildlife. The urban forests, the urban corridors and vegetation within public and private realms make up what we refer to as the urban greening. Mayor, the second report, um, is titled Sustainability Strategy Progress Report, March two thousand and twenty-five. This report concern, it concerns the progress in implen- implementation of the Ipswich City Council's Sustainability Strategy two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-six. The strategy and its associated implementation plans are in their fourth year of implementation. I'd like to thank those council officers who diligently prepared these two reports, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Maden. Council Antonelli, as the seconda, would you wish to? Um, just in, in speaking to this, um, report number two on the City of Urban, City of Ipswich Urban Greening, um, the heat mapping and the analysis of the percentage can be cover per suburb, as well as the Bureau Statistics socially vulnerable data, together provided, um, I think really good evidence for council to prioritise the greening projects and also the progress report. Uh, Raceview, Goodna, and Ipswich Central and Brussels were identified as suburbs in each division requiring our biggest focus for urban greening. With a view to improving both canopy cover and connectivity, we have planted eight hundred and sixty street trees across all four divisions. So it will take a few years to see the full benefits from these plantings. But as the trees grow, we will see the benefits of the shade, the cooling, and as well as the, uh, beautiful walking paths and bike paths in the amenity. On the item three, the Sustainability Strategy Progress Report, uh, since the launch of the Sustainability Strategy in two thousand and twenty-one, council has led by example and has increased its sustainability efforts. Street lighting, efficiency improvements, solar upgrades and a renewable energy power purchasing agreement. Um, and the addition of two electric vehicles in our fleet are some of the fifty-two actions that have been taken over the past, uh, three and a half years. That's great to see. Thank you, and open up for other comments. Council Maden is the. No other comments? We'll move to the vote. There's, all those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we now move on to item sixteen point one, which is the C E O Organisational Performance Report for February twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any questions of the C E O on this report? No, in that case, I will move it. Do I have a seconda? Thank you, Council Antonelli. Uh, speaking to us, it's really great to see, uh, the community embracing council's new Aqua Fitness classes at the, uh, Springfield Central Orion Lagoon as part of our expanded Active and Healthy Programme. The free weekly classes had forty participants in the first week and a hundred and twenty in the second. And we are pleased to be able to offer these, uh, free fitness activities that can benefit people of all ages and abilities. More also pleased that twelve thousand residents have used our on-demand large curbside collection programme in its very first year. It has not only reduced waste, but it's diverted almost a thousand tonnes from landfill, which is a great outcome. We make it easier for locals and visitors to see what is happening in Ipswich with our new event portal. And it's a one-stop shop that will drive visitation to Ipswich businesses and tourism operators and venues. And we'll be launching our latest visitors guide. Um, we had to delay it with the, with the cyclone, but so we'll do it with the, with the I Ton, I think, um, next week, highlighting the major attractions that drive the four hundred million dollar, um, local economy for, uh, for tourism. And will be available on, and is now available online and also at our local cafes, accommodation providers and the visitor information centre. And just to highlight, this month we'll be engaging with the community through our Shapier Ipswich platform to seek people's views and experiences on resource recovery, the Western Corridor Structure Plan, um, the arts and cultural vision and our local law review, as well as the strategic regulation project. I'll open it for other comments. I'll put those to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item sixteen point two, the New Ipswich Planning Scheme. And, uh, this is a quite a momentous one, so I'll, um, are there any questions of council officers? I will move this. Do I have a seconda for that, Councilor Antonelli? Um, in speaking to this, this is a report concerning the progression of the statutory steps for the adoption and commencement of the new Ipswich Planning Scheme and the Local Government Infrastructure Plan. On Valentine's Day this year, um, uh, the Deputy Premier, um, approved the new draft of the Ipswich Planning Scheme and the Local Government Infrastructure Plan to proceed to adoption, subject to conditions, and council officers are currently working through the final stages there. Um, this is another exciting milestone to move us closer to a planning scheme that works for one of the fastest, um, for the fastest growing city in the state. This contemporary planning document will help shape Ipswich during decades of enormous growth. Almost ten, sorry, almost one hundred thousand people were engaged face-to-face, over the phone or online, or in letters sent to all Ipswich rate payers, and five hundred and six formal submissions were received. We have listened extensively to the community, business and industry feedback, and developed a plan that is visionary and innovative. And, um, and a credit to the team, we also received a, a national award from the Planning Institute of, of Australia for the consultation and the communication. We really wanted to pull that all stops and make sure that our community had every opportunity to participate and contribute to this. Uh, the Deputy Premier noted in his feedback that the years of work and extensive consultation that had been undertaken to achieve this significant milestone. Council's now working through the conditions and it's good to have some certainty for the community and development industry on when the plan will be adopted and when it will commence. This blueprint will unlock more housing in the right locations while protecting our established suburban and character residential areas and green spaces, and also importantly, the updated hydrological, um, reports as well. I'll open it for further discussion. Council generally, you'll.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the, um, Chair of the relevant committee, this is quite an exciting step, uh, for Ipswich, having a new planning scheme. You will note in recommendation D that the commencement of the new planning scheme is set to be the first of July, which is good timing with respect to, uh, fees and charges and all the things associated with planning schemes. But this, um, planning scheme in itself is going to be highly interactive for the community. It will be very much user-friendly. You'll be able to look up your own property, properties around you, as to what the zoning is, uh, what the ability of that zoning, uh, provides. It is going to be quite a, um, a new style of planning scheme that the people of Ipswich have not experienced before. Now, what a lot of people don't understand though is a planning scheme is a living and breathing document. Um, it is not fixed. It can be from time to time as our future needs change, can be modified. But of course, that has to go through a very similar process, come back through council again for any of those changes. So, um, but for those, uh, who are very interested in the new planning scheme, once it does, um, it should be, we are looking to, um, put it up about a month before, uh, it goes live uh, for people to have a look at and become familiar with. So, um, as I said, quite exciting, particularly about the interactive, um, side of this particular scheme. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Antonelli. Uh, Council Doyle?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, and, and thank you, Chair. It's certainly, um, an important, uh, but exciting milestone to receive and note this report today. We've been working on the new plan, what we've called the Ipswich City Plan, uh, twenty twenty-five, uh, for the last, um, five years and have had countless briefing sessions and workshops uh, in order to develop, uh, the plan and to now have received the Minister's, uh, approval and progress through the next statutory steps for adoption, um, and have a target commencement date, uh, set down for one July twenty twenty-five. It's certainly very satisfying. Just like to also add that I think there is a few of us think we, we, we should have an honorary planning degree awarded after the countless, uh, sessions, um, working on this plan for the last five years. I'd like to thank all of the staff involved in getting the plan to this point. You have worked tirelessly on developing the new plan and always kept councillors up to date and sought feedback and strategic direction from us throughout the process. This provided important opportunity for councillors to provide the feedback that we receive from our local communities. Uh, and the opportunity to convey residents' concerns, expectations and aspirations for what our beautiful, uh, city of Ipswich will and should look like, uh, as our population is set to double in the coming years. Uh, planning for rapid growth, uh, and the required housing and infrastructure to support that growth is an enormous undertaking for any local government. Um, and it's made even more complex, uh, for Ipswich, having the three assessment regimes to consider, uh, the Ipswich Planning Scheme, the Springfield Structure Plan and the Ripley, uh, P D A, uh, Priority Development Area. Uh, planning is about, uh, the right development in the right locations and making it clear what we want to protect and where development should be avoided in order to meet the challenges for the future while protecting and maintaining the things our community love about Ipswich. We need to plan where, when and how development should occur, and we need to absolutely get it right. I'm confident that the new Ipswich City Plan twenty twenty-five provides a framework and policies to get that balance right for residents of Ipswich, as well as the new residents, uh, we look forward to welcoming in, in coming years. Um, equally as important, um, you know, is our scheme's purpose. It's, it's that vehicle to protect Ipswich, um, as the oldest provincial town and, and one of Queensland's oldest provincial cities. Um, Ipswich has a rich history. Um, it's renowned for its architectural places, indigenous heritage, um, and natural landscapes. Um, as a lover of all things heritage and, and given our rich history, um, I'm confident that the new plan does give us good protection for our heritage. Um, but as Councilor Antonelli has just pointed out, um, we, we cannot rest on this one document at a particular point in, in time. Um, it will continue to be a living, breathing, um, I guess, um, position and look forward to working certainly in particular on the heritage matters and unlocking opportunities to provide better protections for our local heritage. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you, Council Doyle. I put up for Council Augustine.
Oh, huh, thank you, Mayor. Um, um, I too just want to commend the officers in this report, coming in as a, a newbie, coming at the end of, the tail end of this. Um, I, um, I note that there's many councillors still here that were, have worked on it tirelessly for the last couple of years. But I do, uh, want to rec, uh, commend the, um, officers that have brought this to the table. Um, in particular, um, Mr Rule, um, talking to us about, um, and just explaining it in a real, um, in a sense of, so that, you know, you're not being spoken at you, you're spoken with and really trying to understa, you know, making sure that we really understand it. And I think, um, it's going to be a welcome document. Um, I know there's been a couple of organisations, um, and businesses that have been waiting for this, um, scheme to come so they can, um, start really planning and being ac, being able to execute, uh, for the betterment of Ipswich. So thank you and I commend everyone for this report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Um, quickly, um, my colleagues here would understand how much I appreciate a good audit trail. And so I just wanted to commend the officers again in relation to the thoroughness, um, in documenting really important information, um, for future awareness as well. So with any policy or scheme, uh, the knowledge can be lost over the course of time. However, I'm confident our planning officers are diligently recording the information, um, for the awareness of current and future. Uh, council officers, residents, elected reps, et cetera. So it's really important that that's not lost and they really gave me that confidence during our, um, briefing recently. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion? I put the, put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item sixteen point three, which is the New Contract of Employment for the C E O, um, noting that most of these attachments are confidential. Um, so we can have discussions. I will, um, move recommendations A and B at this stage, knowing that we, we may amend them. If that's, and I seek a seconda for that. Thank you, Councilor Doyle. Um, Ms Cooper is a highly skilled C E O who has dedicated herself to the role for the past four years with commitment and professionalism. The C E O continues to consistently meet or exceed her performance measures, and she continues to play a significant role in maintaining stability in council, so we can all focus on serving the community. Feedback from the employee experience surveys highlight the organisation's appreciation for the C E O's empathetic, transparent and approachable leadership style. The C E O is an exemplary leader and is best placed to keep our city moving forward, and I'll be supporting these recommendations today. Now, I think there was some discussion with some people that would like to go into a, a closed session or ask some questions. We do have the relevant, um, legal services and H R, um, branch managers. So I guess I, uh, Council Tully, you had some questions, so should we go into closed session?
Should be in closed session.
Okay.
If you propose that, I'll, I'll move it.
Thank you. So I, I moved that in accordance with, um, section two, five, four, J, three, A of the Local Government Regulations of two thousand and twelve. The meeting moved into closed session to discuss item sixteen point three, to hold a new contract of employment C E O. And that was seconded by Council Tully. Any discussion? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. So we'll ask you as well, C E O D. And if I just ask, um, the H R manager and. And if I just ask the HR manager and...
Thank you. Welcome back to the Council Ordinary meeting for the 27th of March 2025. We obviously went into closed session earlier today and letting you know during that closed session, we had an adjournment between 12:12pm and 1pm for a lunch break. And obviously, we continue a closed session. We're now back in opposition at 1:29pm. Thank you. We took our time to go through the contract offer and just going through line by line, just with things. And obviously, we've made some new recommendations. Based on that, I'll move new recommendations A, B, and C as the original mover. councillor Tully, do you wish to second that?
I will, but could, just for the sake of completeness, could we indicate that we're, that you're withdrawing the original motion?
I'll be withdrawing the original A, B recommendations and putting in new A, B, and C.
Thank you.
So I'll read it out for the... So it's A, B, and C recommendations. A is that pursuant to section 194 of the Local Government Act 2009, council subpar 1, consider Sonia Cooper to be qualified for the role of chief executive officer. And subpar 2 resolves to appoint Sonia Cooper to the role of chief executive officer, subject to the execution of a new employment contract. Recommendation B, that subpar 1, clause 4.1 of attachment I, which is the letter of offer, which is the employment contract, be amended to state, quote, "At least seven months before the termination date, if the city council will advise the employer of an intent to negotiate a new contract offer, if any." And then subpar 2, page 4 of attachment I, will be amended to remove the words 18th day of November 2021, and substituted by an appropriate contract execution date. Recommendation C, that there may be authorized to, subpar 1, offer the CEO a new contract of employment in accordance with the terms contained in attachment I, and as amended by recommendation B of this report. And subpar 2, execute that contract of employment on behalf of council, subject to the condition that any amendments other than minor amendments to its terms, which may arise during the course of any negotiations, are the subject of a future report to a council ordinary?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, scrolling down. Sorry, I'll say that again. Subpar 2, execute that contract of employment on behalf of council, subject to the condition that any amendments other than minor amendments to its terms, which may arise during the course of any negotiations, are the subject of a future report to a council ordinary or special meeting, for its approval or otherwise of those amendments prior to execution, noting that the contract is required to be executed in advance of the expiry of the current contract. Second, are you okay with that? That's agreed? Thank you. Look, I already spoke in opening thus in the beginning to say that Sonia is a highly skilled CEO who has dedicated herself to the role the past four years with commitment and professionalism. The CEO continues to consistently meet or exceed her performance measures, and she continues to play a significant role in maintaining stability in council, so we could all focus on serving our community. Feedback from the employee experience surveys highlight the organisation's appreciation for the CEO's empathetic, transparent, and approachable leadership style. The CEO is an exemplary leader and best placed to keep our city moving forward. I'll be supporting these recommendations today. I'll open up for any other comments?
Just briefly, Mayor, I think the length of the closure to discuss the contract and review it, and it's substantially similar to the existing contract, indicates our willingness and support of an ongoing contract from November of this year. We did dwell on meanings of words and, you know, to clarify a few things, but I think it's true to say that about 98%, 99% of that contract is very similar to the current contract. So, yeah, I congratulate Sonia Cooper on the decision today.
Thank you. And thank you to the HR manager and legal services for their support in giving those recommendations. So thank you. Councillor Doyle?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I too was going to thank our legal and HR team for providing the advice during our lengthy discussions today. Just briefly, I too have enjoyed working with CEO Sonia Cooper for the last five years. Your leadership style has helped this organisation heal and move forward post-administration. Your leadership style has led you to be highly respected and valued in the organisation. I just want to point out, as the mayor has witnessed, you lead with integrity, empathy, and fearlessly through, leading our beautiful city through more than one natural disaster, incredibly complex and sensitive operational matters, as well as through your own personal tragedy. And your service has never faltered. So thank you. Look forward to the next few years.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other? Councillor Antonelli?
I could only concur with my fellow councillors and the mayor, and I look forward to the ongoing working relationship over the next four years.
Thank you, councillor Antonelli. If there's nothing else, I should have mentioned too that councillor Madsen has dialed in. He's on Teams. In that case, I take the matter to the vote. Those in favour of recommendations A, B, and C, raise your hand. Councillor Madsen in the room, in the chambers, it's unanimous. How do you vote? He was on there before.
Affirmative.
Thank you.
Did that come through?
Yes, it did. Thank you, councillor Madsen. Thank you. Then that matter is unanimous? Thank you very much. Thank you, Sonia. We now move on to item 17.1, which is notices of motion. We have two. So the first one's acknowledgement and thanks to people actively involved in the significant weather event known as ex-tropical cyclone Alfred. Councillor Antonelli, that is your notice of motion? I'll hand over to you.
Yeah, it is quite a lengthy motion, Mayor, so I'll just take it as read on the screen. And I move it for and commend it to the members.
Thank you. Do we have a second, though? Thank you, councillor Martin. Councillor Antonelli, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to recognise my deputy LDMG chairs in councillor Pi Augustine and Jacob Madsen, who are, who's, well, Jacob's here online, and thank them very much for their work and their assistance during the local, the most recent disaster. But Mayor and councillors, as you're aware, a few weeks ago, this city was threatened by a very serious weather system. And Mayor, I'm also, thank you very much for your, your report on the matters of public interest. And I'm very pleased to hear that that will be included in the minutes, because that is a very good historical record of what occurred. So it's good to have that on future record. This city was threatened by a very serious weather system, a potential disaster, unwitnessed and not experienced in this area for at least a generation. Tropical cyclone Alfred was slowly tracking down the coast of Queensland and threatened to hit the coastline to our east, further threatening to continue inland as a cyclone, with cyclonic winds and monsonal rain. This, Mayor and councillors, was an event that could test the very metal of our city's disaster response. That said, as the Chair of the LDMG, I had every confidence in the preparedness, and more importantly, the experience and ability of our local disaster coordinators and the membership of the LDMG. It must be understood that ex-tropical cyclone Alfred presented us with three separate events, all linked, but all presenting their own challenges. The first being the threat of cyclonic and damaging winds, which might not have necessarily eventuated. The second being flash flooding of Bundamba Creek. And finally, the riverine flooding of the Bremer, and to a lesser degree, the Brisbane Rivers. Each event, a day apart, over a week of rapidly changing forecasts culminating in three intensive days of disaster response. Mayor and councillors, it will come as cold comfort to those residents and businesses affected by the flash flooding of the Bundamba Creek or the rising water of the Bremer River, but considering the forecasted weather, Ipswich was extremely lucky when compared to our friends in the Lockyer Valley, Gold Coast, and other parts of South East Queensland. One can never truly know what Mother Nature will do, but the local disaster coordination centre and the disaster management group stood ready for whatever Alfred could throw at us. And it's because of that preparation experience, the rapid response, and carefully considered decisions of those involved, that the Ipswich community remained safe from harm. Therefore, I would like to commend to this council and the community in general, the following groups of people who served this community well during the disaster response. We thank them from the bottom of our hearts. Firstly, I recognise the members of our own internal disaster emergency management team, and those who put up their hand to work with the local disaster coordination centre. I make particular mention today of our local disaster coordinator Kay Kavanagh, and her deputy coordinators in Matt Smith and Matthew Pinder. It was this group, through the leadership of the coordinators, that helped guide our civic response through the event. Our works and field services department, who filled or assisted with the filling of some 47,000 bags of sand, as you highlighted earlier, Mayor, as well as tended to the signage of our flooded roads and crossings, not to mention the removal of other hazards left behind, so we could remain safe on our roads. The staff, government, and community volunteers who set up and manned the number of refuge and evac centres needed, their faces filled with compassion and kindness for those in need. These groups included our own internal community services team, Rosewood Community Early Response Team, the Gales Community Early Response Team, Ipswich Housing Service Centre, Critical Response Team from the Queensland Government, One Bridge, In-Community, St John's Ambulance Service, Rapid Relief Team, and Shiloh Church, as well as the Ipswich Showgrounds. Special mention to our CEO and executive leadership team, which includes all of our general managers. It was their united and cooperative response and approach that ensured that all of council's resources were ready to respond as required. The internal and external membership of the local disaster management group. The community may not be aware that this group has an extensive membership of external stakeholders, including but not an exhaustive list, is the Queensland Police, Fire, Ambulance, and the SES, the RAF, Queensland Health, Enerjex, Urban Utilities, SEQ Water, Education Department, the Department of Transport and Main Roads, MBN, and that just names a few. The community might not also be aware that this group works together to ensure that all essential services are maintained or quickly re-established to service any critical need before, during, and after a disaster event. This group, I can attest, is a well-oiled machine. In closing, it would be remiss not to mention a critical element of our disaster response. It might be the role of the LDMG to attend to the preparedness and response for local disasters, but the Queensland Police are the lead agency in disaster management. In this recent event, this city was ably served by Superintendent Kylie Rigg, who, as the district disaster management coordinator for both Ipswich and the Somerset, had her hands full. Both her team, including, both her and her team, including Senior Sergeant Kerry Olson, were of great service and assistance in their leadership to the community when the community needed it most. Their coordination of the door knock of a number of at-risk locations, as you highlighted, Mayor, ensured that people were safe from harm. Mayor and councillors, this is hardly an exhaustive list, and indeed, I may have missed some people or group of people. If I have, I would be more than happy to include them via an amendment. And obviously, as I highlighted before, I thank very much the support I received from my deputy chairs and councillors Jacob Madsen and Pi Augustine. It was a concerted and coordinated approach and response to a very challenging situation, and all parties went above and beyond. In all these cases, these individuals and groups put in enormous hours, in some cases forsaking family and loved ones while they attended to our community's needs. And while this motion seeks council's favour towards recognising and thanking all involved, I'd like to end by personally thanking and commending them for all their tireless efforts and commitment to our city of Ipswich. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Antonelli. Councillor Martin is the second. Do you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to concur with councillor Antonelli's statements, and also say that, yes, whilst we did dodge a bullet, there were some people, they say in most divisions, that did suffer loss. Some are still recovering. So, yes, whilst we did dodge a bullet, it was good to see that people were out and about helping those that did suffer. I'd also like to acknowledge the work that Andrew did as the LDMG Chair. I know he slept in the office, we could tell. Councillor Madden and I just a bit broke a leg trying to get in there. So I think councillor Antonelli deserves a bit of an accolade for all the work he did, tireless work he did too, in keeping us all informed. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Martin. I'll open up for any other discussion or comments.
Just wanted to concur-
Just wanted to concur with the previous comments today and just thank the Chair, deputy chairs and all the members from external and external organisations for being, doing what they do to allow us to do what we could do for our community in our various divisions. So, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Augustine?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to reiterate everything that councillor Antonelli has said about the process. It was my first disaster, even, thank goodness, it wasn't to the full extent. So, but there's two, there's two aspects that I would like to just point out. One was the, the community resilience, the community wanting to be prepared for what was going to be thrown at them. Councillor Antonelli and myself went to Red Bank Plains where it was a self-serve, filling up your bags, and the community was so patient and just knew that there was a process and they followed the process because they wanted to feel safe and they, they did. It was a, it was a really smooth process for them to be able to fill up their sandbags. But on top of that, the second part was then councillor Doyle and myself called out to Briggs Road just to see what the other side of our operation was. And I just cannot commend the organisation and the, the, the crew that was there, God, that worked so diligently and just so effortlessly to be able to. It was just like a well-oiled machine, wasn't it councillor Doyle? So, I really would like to commend those officers, all of them, for the way they, and I only went out to Briggs Road, I know there was a couple of others, but in that, in that one, just there at Briggs Road, it was just amazing to watch how great the, the officers, all of them, all the staff operated. So, yes.
Thank you councillor Augustine. I'll open up for anyone else to make comment. If there's not councillor Antonelli, do you just like to say anything in, not that anyone went against you, but do you want to say anything but in reply before we go to a vote?
No, 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 it's all good. It's all good. I just want to thank everyone for their comments, the kind words. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's many hands that make light work and I think that we did very well. I think that even if things had have gotten worse than what they had, I think we would have been very well prepared. I want to thank the councillors for their on-ground advice of what they were seeing in their areas and I'd also like to thank you, Mayor, for your representation of the council publicly and as the public face and getting that information out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Madsen, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now have a notice of motion, seventeen point two, from councillor Augustine on repairs due to flood damaged assets. I'll hand over to you councillor Augustine.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So, this motion, I'd like to, oh, I, I hope that everyone's read my motion and I'd like to put it forward. It's got to do, it's two parts, Mayor. It's, one is to do about fencing, fencing that's been flooded, been affected by floods. That's what part A, well, part one, and part two is ensuring that electrical power boxes are installed higher than flood levels. So, I put that to the council. Yeah.
Thank you. And councillor Antonelli will second it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you wish to speak to it as well councillor Antonelli? Sorry, have you, did you have more to say? So, I thought you'd finished. No?
Oh, no, no. I, moved, yeah.
Yep. Would you like to speak to it councillor Augustine?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, I thought you...
Oh, no, thank you. Well, it's been a long day. With Nellie there, stay with us, everyone. Mayor, this one, from after the effects of, effects of the flood, I just noticed, being down at particularly one sporting club's Ipswich Knights and just seeing how they, they've been flooded numerous times over the years and their resilience and their preparedness for the next flood, just, I looked at it and I thought, wow, that's actually something that we might be able to endorse going forward for other sporting clubs. And that's their, their, the way they've done collapsible fences around their fields. So, what really sparked me was that three sides of their four, of the four sides of their football club, of their football field were, is collapsible fences. So, we, they knew they were going to get flooded, they put down their fences, but the fourth fence is not a collapsible fence. And so, when the floods came, all of the non-collapsible fences have been damaged. And so, for me, I looked at it and I thought, well, if we had three sides that they can just, and councillor Antonelli was there the morning of, popped up, cleaned the debris off, they're ready to go. Now, the, the, the danger is that that fourth fence is still, was still down and, you know, when, when you've got a nice green field and there's access to a green field, there's, there's the potential of hounds coming in and doing donuts all around the fields. And if that happened, the fields then become not usable for potentially about three months, which then impacts the, the sporting club. So, I just thought, well, if we had four, four around especially that field, that would be great. But then going forward, I think on the same day that I, that went, I went down to Ipswich Knights, I think you, you and myself were down at the South East Red, Redbacks down at Red Bank Plains and their field, their fences are also damaged and we could see the line of the flood coming through and affecting the fence. So, potentially that's another field and I'm not too sure of all the other fields that, or sporting clubs. There could be also other open spaces that would need, that we've got a council fencing that could potentially fall into this as well. But I just thought we'd just start with sporting fields and see if we can bring a report to the next infrastructure and planning and assets committee to see if, sorry, again... The May, the May, the May, yeah, the May, um, meeting, if we can bring a report to that meeting, just seeing estimated costs of potential, but also, Mayor, I'm not too sure, you, you would know more about the resilience funding, if there was any funding we could access as well outside of council for that particular, for that particular repairs to fields. But then on the second, the second side of things is the electrical, electrical power box. I put that in the motion because especially at Ipswich Knights, they've been flood affected now a couple of times and we seem to be putting that electrical box back down onto ground. I put it in there just to make sure that next time, or now, when we do go and put that electrical power box back in, it's at a higher level than, I said historical flood levels, but that could be eighteen something, the first flood. But, you know, realistically, whatever the flood levels are now, definitely not on ground zero, but higher than the, the current flood levels. So, that's, that's what I, that's probably my motion, Mayor. Hopefully, I've got some support behind it, but thank you.
Thank you councillor Augustine. Councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, just to be brief. Look, Ipswich Knights is a very fine example of innovation and resilience, what they've designed there, and they took that upon themselves to design and build those fences in that way and they proved themselves as a good design after what happened there with the Bundamba flash flood. So, I would support Pi in her recommendation or in her motion that that should be something we should be looking at, building resilience in, in other sporting clubs as well. And obviously, we just need to come down to cost and the like. So, but I certainly commend councillor Augustine for bringing this to us and commend the motion to my fellow councillors.
Thank you. I'll open it for other councillors to discuss. Councillor Tully?
Thank you. I, I support that. I think it's an initiative that we need to look at for the advertising, but also for the, the electrical power boxes. That doesn't mean that it won't, like the, 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 could, you know, the supply might be cut off in those areas anyway, but the actual boxes are protected till after the flood. Could I just make one, it says above historical flood levels, that would include eighteen ninety-three before, and even nineteen seventy-four, the Wyvenhoe Dam hadn't been in, opened at that stage. Perhaps, you know, we need to take an appropriate measure of what, which level, could we put the word after above appropriate historic flood levels? So, so whatever, whatever we could, I know the motion says we consider moving it, but, but otherwise, the staff in doing that might think that you're talking about eighteen ninety-three or even, even floods, you know, fifty or more years earlier.
So, I'll take it that you're moving that amendment?
Yeah.
To, to add the word appropriate between above and historic?
Yeah, and that may be accepted by the mover and sector.
And I'll just double check, I'll just see if councillor Augustine is okay with that. Yep. Yep. Councillor Antonelli, are you okay with it? Okay, so that, that is the motion, just let Vicky put that in there. There we go. Thank you. Looking, speaking to this, I think any work we can do to make our city more flood resilient is certainly worth investigating. The drop-down fences at Ipswich Knights are really worth investigating and I imagine it'll be generally cheaper in the long run to repair and to, to maintain. With our sporting fields, while power may be restored quickly after a flooding event, if the electrical power boxes are damaged, these sites are unable to be reconnected to power until they are repaired. This can delay power being available for months after a flood. So, I look forward to seeing what costs are involved, to have more resilient fencing and power supply for our sporting fields and I commend you councillor Augustine for the notice of motion. Any other discussion? Councillor Augustine, as the mover, do you wish to say anything before we go to a vote?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Madsen, how do you vote?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. That was, unanimous, so thank you. Thank you. There are no questions on notice. Oh, I wasn't sure, sorry, maybe it was, I did see today councillor Doyle, you did send an email out about joining the community and sports committee? Or do you want to wait till next time? Yeah, I know, I know that councillor Madsen, who's the Chair of that, is, is on team, so I'm not sure if he's read the email. Is he still there? Did you wish to mention that today? Or, or wait till next time?
Yes, I guess you brought it up now, so if councillor Madden is Chair on...
Madsen.
Sorry, it was Madsen.
Councillor Madden, I will join Environment as well, but if councillor Madsen is still... Yeah, well, okay, let's just do that.
Hang on, hang on, I just want to check, there's some discussions when, so councillor Madden was speaking and didn't have his microphone on. Yeah.
We'll need to suspend standing orders, Mayor.
I thought it was just a matter we could just ask or we do it at the council.
I, I don't understand what's being proposed or considered.
Oh, okay.
I gave notice via email to the Chair of Community and Sport earlier today that I would like to be a member of his committee. And that's all that's required under our meeting procedures.
Yeah.
Oh, now, it's got to be then adopted by council.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, it needs to be adopted by council.
Given that notice and there's an ability to adopt it today, I guess, is what the Mayor's suggesting.
Well, is there another, something else?
So, I think, can I just clear, you were wanting to join the community and sport as well as the environment sustainability?
Yes, I haven't given my written notice to the Chair of Environment Sustainability.
But I believe he offered.
Yeah.
ESP, I knew you wanted to join my committee.
Okay.
I'll move that so, so much of standing orders be suspended to enable the consideration of the appointment of councillor Doyle to, to, to committees.
Okay. I guess in the past, we've had the, I'll have to check, but we've always allowed it just to be raised at the end of the meeting?
I thought we were there.
Sorry?
I believe that's fine, but happy to check.
Chair?
Yeah. That's what's happened.
Oh, no, I'm getting advice that councillor Tully is correct.
They, God, he hates hearing that, doesn't he?
Nearly kills me.
Okay, so what was your, what was your...
Make the doors bigger.
What was your...
So, so much of standing, it's not all the standing, but just so much of standing orders be suspended to enable the consideration of the appointment of councillor Doyle to two council committees.
Okay, I will second that. All those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Madsen, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, I think councillor Doyle, you were putting forward to join, what's your notice of motion?
Thank you.
If that sounds better.
Yeah, that I...
I'll move, I'll move that councillor Doyle become a member of both the community and sport, or sport and community, and the environment and sustainability committees.
Thank you. And I have a second from councillor Madden. Thank you. Any discussion? Do you wish to speak to that councillor Doyle?
No, just looking forward to, yeah, okay, I'll stop talking now, I can take the hint.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Madsen, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Now, we come back into ordinary, out of, we turn off the suspension of standing orders. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Councillor Madsen, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. We get to, there's no question on notice, so I'll close the meeting now at two oh one PM. Thank you very much.
Can I just make a comment before we close, Mayor?
We've already closed, sorry. But do you want to say something?
Yeah, what were you going to say? Hooray? You're just going to say hip hip hooray.